You ready?
Thank you.
Tara, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Maranti?
Here.
Tim Connor?
Here.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
David Hardy?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Neil Tomlin?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman?
Here.
We have minutes from the March 15th workshop. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Good to go? Okay. Page two, first paragraph, the sentence in the middle of it that reads, "The board is not expected," that should read, "The board's members are not expected to make the analysis of the proposed mitigation measures," and then it should be inserted, "on their own." But rather than, words should be inserted, "they can hire consultants, et cetera, et cetera." I just didn't want to make it look like the board didn't have to do any analysis and could just rely on its consultants. The other one, it's just a minor one, on page three, the second to last paragraph at the bottom, the one that begins, Mr. Gabba explained. It should say about halfway through that, "Seeker review is separate from the approval criteria for," and then, "the project."
Say that again?
Okay. I'll read, I'll tell you where to insert it. It starts, "Mr. Gabba explained to the board that although technically seeker review is separate from," and right now it says approval, it should say instead, "from the," insert the word "the," "approval criteria," and then instead of the word "of," it should say "for" the project after that. And then in the third line in that same paragraph, the one that begins declaration, it says, "in the approval decision, comma, that," the word "say" should be inserted before the word "that." So, "in the approval decision, comma, say that you want certain." You follow? That's all.
Move to adopt the minutes of the workshop?
I'll move that, make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. The regular meeting? Any comments? Additions, deletions? No? No one? Move to adopt minutes from the March meeting?
I'll move this, adopt the minutes from March.
Second?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, I know we have an agenda here, but usually we have a notice on the bottom that items may not be dealt with as on the agenda, they've been moved around. And the one item on this agenda which has been with us for a long time, I want to move it along, and I'm going to ask the board tonight, the Hudson Island Reserves, actually the fourth item on the agenda, we're going to deal with it now, and I'm going to ask the board, anyone to move for a secret declaration, either positive or negative, and then we'll go around the board members stating their positions and how they vote. And I'm going to open up to the board for a motion for either a positive or negative declaration. Anyone?
Still moved.
Which? Positive or negative?
Oh, I think you want to, sorry. I took it too, sorry. I vote for, so if you want my movement, I move for a positive declaration.
Is there a second to that?
Awesome. Good answer.
I want to go around the room and get everybody's comments. Neil, since you made the motion?
Okay. Given the amount of work that our applicants have made, I have done some work just to share my thoughts. So if you'll be patient, I'll do my best to read a pace. "I'm sure many people, including the applicant and his extensive team, are relieved to finally be taking a vote in the secret declaration. I want to thank Ulysses, Glenn, Mr. O'Rourke, Steve Gross for their efforts. It has been, as you've reminded us often, a long process, extensive and expensive. We appreciate your efforts to supply information and data and opinions in support of your project. You've put a heavy burden on us to review and understand. Thank you for that. It is important that we bring to your project our best efforts, given how much you have invested. I also want to thank the stalwart members of this board, appointed and paid staff. You have worked diligently over the years to provide us opinions. Finally, I thank the public, the Conservation Board, including our friends at the Hudson Island Land Trust, tens of public speakers, Joel Russell, who wrote our code, and many others who submitted written opinions. Now, I see your job as to balance individual property rights with community rights. It is a constant balance, and a constant exercise in balance. If you look at the history of this board, we have actually never said no to anything in my tenure of seven years. We have asked for adjustments, and on two occasions applicants have withdrawn plans giving heavy concerns, and one came back to a new location, that's Magazzino. Regarding SECRE, we have never declared anything other than a negative declaration. And I would say that this board has squarely valued property rights during my tenure, certainly I do. Coming to tonight, we've also had, never had such an extensive project before us in my tenure, one that addresses many communities, human and otherwise water and nature. The question's been asked us to view, to have our view on SECRE. As I read the standard as described by SECRE guiding the process, this document here, it states, "The lead agency must determine whether an action has the potential to cause at least one significant adverse impact where solutions can be explored to, quote, 'avoid or minimize impacts.' Mr. Gabba has added the concept of minimizing to the fullest extent as practicable, which is not covered in this document but is clearly in the statute. We are volunteers who are supposed to use our best judgment in support of the community. I am not a scientist, or a use planner, or an attorney. I am supposed to take in the findings from our various constituents, hear them, and weigh the facts as we apply the law. But we are also supposed to use our judgment. If it was simply the role to ask a machine or pay a firm to write a report, then I would have my Thursday nights back and my Sunday mornings. As such, I find several parts of the EAF Part II still of material concern where I believe that there is a potential for significant impact. I'll list them off: Three D, E, H, and I, and J, Four H, and Seventeen C. Three relates to impacts in surface water on Ulmer Pond. The safety of the pond and its downstream relationship to Clover Creek is paramount to us. Degrading water quality, decreasing the size of the water body, and discharging of waste into a water via are all key topics for Section Three. The applicant has designed a structure that has houses ringing a significant portion of the circumference of the pond. That is ostensibly because the value of a home is enhanced by being near a body of water. This approach with significant downward sloping land to the pond on all sides with lawn that goes down to within 140 feet, where several experts, including HHLT, have suggested 300 feet or more is appropriate of the pond, all leading to see a significant potential impact. The applicant has stated there are several mitigations that are necessary to stave off the damage: a SWIP, erosion plan, an HOA in place that's effective, inspections by the yet unknown easement holder, adherence to a ban on fertilizer bans, the removal of vegetation, and many others. It is precisely the number of tools that will need to be implemented simultaneously that lead me to suggest there's a potential impact. As a former military helicopter pilot, I know about accidents, and from the MTA board and membership on the Safety Committee, I also know about accidents. Accidents happen through a multiplication of factors, each contributing their risk and increasing at an accelerated rate by the coupling of multiple things that most occur together to work. Each of these gives me pause. Collectively, it strikes me there's very much a real potential that they fail. If all have to work together and all, and if one fails, they all fail, that puts the whole in jeopardy. The remedy is quite practicable. Do not build around the pond. There are many tens of acres, and there are a range of dwelling sizes you could choose. Instead, you've chosen to have all the same sized lots, which will get into the character issue of Seventeen C. This same notion is mentioned by our Conservation Board, and it is practicable as there is much more acreage upon which to build and nothing beyond plans on paper that must be adjusted. On Four H, the potential impact of the industrial scale equestrian center for manure management and groundwater. We are concerned, as is the public, with the large volume of horses, their antibiotics, and their manure. You have described a complex system of manure capture, and yet the entire siting of the gargantuan facility near a feeder into Clover Creek and the Ulmer Pond is of sincere concern. The very size of this facility, the number of horses, leads us to be concerned at the chance of this manure and their material eventually getting into the water supply is a serious potential impact and one that can be significant. And again, while the applicant, and while the applicant has mitigations mentioned, they equal another set of interrelated activities and require each to succeed. A practicable action could be to significantly reduce the size of this facility, or move it to a much further away from any water, or even better, eliminate the idea in total. It is imminently practicable as there is nothing that requires a commercial horse facility to be there, and it is not as if the residential development cannot exist without it, and it is not as if you are building on an existing facility where it needs to be kept going for the sake of an ongoing business. On Seventeen C, in keeping with the community character, we've heard the thoughts of many of the community. We've heard the thoughts and communicate as a board for many years, since Mary Ellen Finger, former board member, implored you in her last meeting before her death, that the layout of this development is conventional in look and feel. The houses are not clustered, they are not of varying size and styles, they are uniform, spread in a uniform way, and without differentiation. The impact is potentially significant as other conservation subdivisions that they come into the future will look at this and say, "I guess it is okay." To quote our town supervisor at last month's town board meeting, talking about another development, a development that did not accurately represent their intentions to this board, and soon after opening under one pretense or asking for an expansion of their site plan and usage, quote, "If it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck." And so this is a duck, a duck called a conventional subdivision. It would be practicable to adjust, as again, this is a plan on paper, one that can be adjusted with thoughtful adherence to conservation subdivision planning guidelines. For all these reasons, with respect for the applicant's efforts and a deep regard for the needs and desires of our community, in keeping with our code, and without any joy, I vote for a positive declaration. Going forward, I would ask this development much more thoughtfully taken into account conservation subdivision plan to much more tightly cluster these homes with consideration to avoid the pond and curtail the extended location of the horse farm. I will also ask that our scoping for an EIS, if such declaration is approved, address the three major issues I have raised. Thank you for your tolerance, everyone.
Thank you. Peter?
If I can speak.
Yeah, you, since you seconded the motion.
Neil really covered.
Oh, you need the mic. Here, let me give you this mic.
Neil very much covered what I was concerned with as well, particularly the 300 feet that was part of the report that was actually given to us by the applicant, and also by the industrial nature of what appears to be the horse facility. I just thought they set a very bad precedent before, for the first conservation subdivision. And it didn't feel that they were the right, the right way to go for us, and thinking that we would be able to make some further changes, not necessarily a positive deck, but I think we want to try to get to that tonight, either that or a negative. And really, I wish I could cover some more of the territory I wanted to, but Neil really did it for me.
I'm sorry.
So, so that's where I stand on the positive declaration.
Thank you. Dave?
Okay. I'm for the positive declaration. I also, you know, am grateful to our colleague here for spelling out a lot of these reasons. Mine are, you know, going from sort of, the most to me is the Ulmer Pond problem. I also have a difficulty with the 40-horse barn. I don't think we know enough about it yet. There was one specific thing, too, that I just really noted. There was a gentleman here, I read every single one of those rebuttals that were in all three of the little packets, and there was a gentleman whose name was, I believe, Mr. Botinsky, or something like that, who asked this simple question, because one of the things that got explained to us was that that number of horses would be okay because they were all dressage horses, and therefore used less time, or needed less time to be exercised and so forth. And the question that Mr. Botinsky asked was, what happens if they're not all dressage horses? And I don't think, you know, without knowing that that is sort of figured out already, and the size of the barn likewise is figured out to accommodate that, that we can really sign off on this equestrian center. That's...
Yes? After what I felt was a thorough review, I'm sorry, after what I felt was a thorough review, and having somewhat of a late start on this project, I have questions concerning the size of the equestrian center and how the 40 horses came about, but in reviewing of everything and mitigation of some of these concerns, I would be voting negative on this.
So you're voting no against the motion? Okay. Neil?
Well, again, I appreciate the time and the efforts of both the applicant and the, and the public, and the time of the board. And I've, much like many of you, I've narrowed it down to two elements, being the number and the location of the houses, and then the nature of the equestrian center. I don't think we can go back and ask the applicant again to consider the number and location of the buildings. I think, in a, as a phrase, that ship has sailed. I think they've played by the rules, and I think they've done what was asked of them according to the existing code. Now, Steve, you had, you had mentioned in one of your briefs that there was a possible, what are our avenues to address the scope of the equestrian center? I'm sorry, the second, the second sticking point is of course, is the scope of, the size of the equestrian center. So after a vote tonight, what are our options as far as reviewing and possibly scaling down the scope of the equestrian center? Because I think we need to take more, I think it deserves a much closer look. So on the one hand, I think that's your, that's your real potential source for, for looking for minimizing the impact to the greatest degree practicable. So what are our, what are our options after tonight?
Well, the significance of the equestrian center is twofold. On the one hand, it could theoretically at least, impact your seeker review if you feel that it's going to have some sort of environmental impact. The other significance of the equestrian review is, as far as the conservation subdivision site plan, I guess it would be, goes. You look at how the equestrian center will interact with the property, and in a broader sense with adjoining properties, not so much actually, more just how it operates within the confines, but like I say, it's not completely out of bounds. And if you have some legitimate planning and engineering reasons for saying, "40 horses are unacceptable," I'll pick a number out of thin air, 20 horses is, okay? Then you would have the authority, as part of your permitting process, to say, "Scale it back." But you would not have the authority to arbitrarily say, "If you find that an equestrian center is proper for the property, if you're going to limit it, you have to have a rational basis for limiting it." If you feel a need to know more about it, there are, there are two ways that you could go about that as well. I mean, the first way is, rather than saying, "Well, I don't know enough about the equestrian center," or somebody issue a positive declaration, make them go through an EIS, you could ask them to supplement their Part III EAF and get more information on that, maybe even update their plans, maybe give you a separate, you know, packet explaining, you know, here's where the horse trails will be, here's where the barn will be, here's our, you know, everything as far as the physical manifestations of it on there, and any write-up that you have. And that may be enough to pull you over and make you say, "All right, we're going to issue a negative declaration." But if you're satisfied that there aren't going to be environmental impacts, you could certainly ask for more information about it in the course of reviewing the conservation subdivision, and they could provide you that information there. The difference would be if you make your, your secret determination now, you're going to be foreclosed from, unless you're going to revoke your neg deck later on, you're going to be foreclosed from really getting into the environmental aspects of the equestrian center because you've already decided that, you know, that there's not going to be any significant adverse environmental impacts by your SECRE. So does that make sense? There's like a dichotomy here, there's two? There's the permit process and the secret process?
I don't, I don't see holding up the applicant any longer by making a positive deck. I think they've done, I think they've really, I think they've minimized the environmental impact as best they can, but again, the equestrian center and needing to know more about it. And if we're...
I'm sorry, I know that you're in the middle of the vote.
Yes. Okay, yeah, but you got somebody who's on the fence here, so.
No, no.
Yeah. My, my, my feeling is, is that we should know more about it.
Do you want to know more about it before you vote on SECRE, or are you satisfied with SECRE and just want to know more about it in the context of, you know, the conservation subdivision?
This, the, the size of it. So if we, if we, if I vote for a negative declaration tonight, can we say later on, like, 40 is too many? Because I want to see the numbers, because I know a little bit about this, and there's numbers, X number of horses, X number of biomass, X amount of, you have room they need for exercise. If we have that, I mean, I haven't really seen it. I mean, as you said, it's sort of been a, it's sort of been a patched-together explanation.
It's pretty piecemeal in their, in their EAF, I agree with you on that. But, you know, if you vote for a negative declaration tonight, you're not going to be able to demand more environmental information about it, and you're not going to be able to say you want to limit it based on environmental impacts of it, because you have already determined by virtue of the negative declaration that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts from the equestrian center.
All right. In that case, I have to vote for a positive deck?
Well, or in the alternative, you could ask them for an additional EAF Part III to supplement it. You don't have to go one way. I mean, if you want to, that's your, it's your vote, of course, but I'm just saying that's not your only avenue.
So that would mean me, me voting neither positive or negative?
You'd move to table or something like that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then if that, that were the case procedurally, then I'd move to table for more information on the equestrian center.
Move to table is... Do you need a second for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have a second on the move to table?
Well, don't you want to hear everybody else on the main motion first? I mean, you can second it now.
But doesn't a move to table take precedent?
Yeah, but not the vote, well, you can still hear people first.
I'll finish with, we have two left.
All right, why don't you see if you got a second on it first? Or do you want to wait till everybody hears and then see if you got a second?
All right. Yeah. Well, I asked for a second, and nobody spoke up. Kim, do you want to say what you have to say?
Okay. So, oh. So, like everybody else, you know, I'm concerned about the equestrian center. I'm concerned about the fact that when we make decisions, we have to make decisions not based on, as I understand it, you know, what this project is right this minute, but the fact that it's going to be, these will be structures and they'll be there. And we've had the experience recently where there's an equestrian center that was approved for a particular purpose, which I believe has now changed hands twice. And I don't, it's the one that's up by Stonecrop. So, you know, it's a, what it might look like it's going to be now is not necessarily what I think it might be in the future. And we can't protect against, you know, things not staying the same, but it is a large number of horses, and if they're not going to be dressage horses in the future, which is a possibility, you know, that's some, that's a concern that I think has an environmental impact. As Neil said, you know, we haven't seen any alternative designs, and it's, the pond, it seems to me, surrounding the pond with houses, and then surrounding the pond again with a wall at each house, is, you know, if the animals want to get to the pond and there are walls, you know, I'm, I don't understand how that's, you know, environmentally appropriate. And we can't change that once we vote, if we vote that we're, if we close seeker, you know, we can't then say, "Hey, you know, we need to have fewer houses around the pond." The other thing I'm concerned about is enforcement. You know, one of the things that people complain about whenever the town makes rules is, you know, "How are you going to enforce those rules?" And here, what we have is an HOA, which is tasked with an enormous amount of enforcement. And on top of that, we don't know who the conservation easement holder is going to be. We know that it won't be the land trust. We haven't really had any information from the applicant who an alternative would be, whether they'd be accredited, whether, you know, it's a, it's a substantial job, and it requires a substantial amount of funding to be able to, you know, you can't, you don't just put a conservation easement on something and then it's done. It has to be monitored every year, it has to, you know, requires, I have a conservation easement on some of my property, and, you know, it's, it's not a, you know, do it once and forget about it. So it really matters who's going to hold the easement, and we really haven't learned anything about that. So that's concerning to me. I'm trying to think what else I could say that, I don't, I don't know if there's anything that I can say that anybody else hasn't already said. I do have one question, like, it's not clear to me who owns the equestrian center, whether the homeowners association owns it, or whether it's a separate company that owns it. And I think that, again, has some enforcement implications. So, you know, it just seems to me that if, if, if by, there are still all these questions that we want answered, and after tonight, if we vote for a neg deck, we don't get to ask any more of those questions. We don't get to see alternative designs. We don't, you know, we, we, one of the things that's difficult about this process is that we go along and, you know, we ask questions, and they say, "Oh, we're going to take care of that later, we're going to take care of that later." And then, you know, it's at the point when, you know, that might get taken care of, it's usually past a decision-making point. It's how it feels to me at the moment. So, all of that is a long way of saying that I would vote for a positive deck.
Okay. I have a number of issues with this, and as most other people have said, the primary issue I have, and there's some parts to it that haven't been mentioned, but the horse paddock, the barn, I don't even know why this is in the project. To me, that's more like an agricultural thing, and the fact that we're talking about people's homes, we've, we've interjected something here, and the big talk has been about how to handle manure, the horse waste. Nobody's mentioned the amount of water that 40 horses will consume, the amount of water that they produce go into the ground, possibly into the water table. Nobody's mentioned that at all. The break that this puts in the developable land, the size of the barn, the size of the paddock, I ran across a little term the other day, maybe Ron and Steve can elaborate on this, called LLU. We have farm animals, in the code, an LLU is a large animal which is supposed to have one acre for usage. But now, I don't know how this horse facility overcomes that, or what the relationship is, but I know that the issues I mentioned about the usage of water, water, and that's the second issue, the water table and the consumption of water, and the disposal of water is a major issue that I don't think has been appropriately addressed. Another major issue I have is, we're talking about a property, a small amount of developable land, and we have these large houses on one acre sites. There's no need for them to be one acre sites. I find that it's going to be much more difficult for the HOA to control how the homeowners are going to want to do what they want to do on these expensive homes and large lots are going to want to do with their properties. I don't think there's going to be enough control from an HOA. I happen to live in an HOA, and I know the things that go by, the people, that HOAs never know about. I think the homes can be moved away, if the lots are made much smaller, they can be moved away from the pond. I know that we have another pond in town that was killed by Barrett Pond, just short distance away, from fertilizers and other things that seeped into it now. We were kids, we used to skate on it. Now it's not, you can practically walk across it on the lily pads. It's, it's a dead water body. And I fully expect with this type of usage, both the, the equestrian center, the number of houses, and the proximity to the pond, Ulmer Pond has gone to wind up the same way, and I don't believe it'll be very long before that happens. So, and Neil has addressed some of the other issues, but they're my, my major issues. And I vote yes for a positive deck.
Well, you would vote yes, but you haven't voted yet.
No.
Just saying.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Just saying.
What?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion.
Well, we have a motion. It's been seconded.
Yeah, and a second.
Well, you have two, right? And what was the motion, the table get a second or no?
No.
It did not? Okay.
You've asked three times that.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't get a second to that. So, Neil, you just moved to table, so we don't count his vote?
Well, there's no second, so you wouldn't. So if you want to call the question, the board can vote.
Okay. Let's call the question.
Anything you can do?
It's up to you, Andy.
Okay. If you make a brief.
If I may, just very briefly respond to the issue that's been raised with regard to the horses and the number of horses. Obviously, that's something that's of concern to all of you. It is, Mr. Lissi, I was able to locate an expert who is here tonight, who has over forty years of experience, has worked with Olympic gold medalists, and is well familiar with dressage. And as that appears to be the principal and primary concern here, I would respectfully request that you have the opportunity to hear from him. I have his resume, we have his background. We promised not to take too much of your time, but if it's that important and it's that pivotal, I would respectfully request we have that opportunity.
I'll survey the board. How's the board feel?
I was clear with my view last time that we've had an enormous amount of information from the public and otherwise. Most of my comments cover other topics as well.
Toman.
I think procedurally it would be unsound to allow that at this point.
Okay. Anyone else? Peter? Kim?
I think that you addressed the salient points that were my concern.
All right. I decline. We decline. We decline that request. The board has spoken. We've heard it all before, and one member said, and I agree with him, it'd be out of, from Neil Toman, that it's out of order at the moment. So I'd just like to take a vote. Well, we haven't voted on it. And it's five to one.
No, no, you need to vote. You just said having to vote.
Okay. All right. I was taking, okay. So we have a motion on the floor, a second. Dave Hardy, vote on the motion. The motion is a positive, declare a positive deck.
So, positive.
Peter?
Positive.
Kim?
Yes, positive.
Neil?
Positive.
Dennis?
Negative.
Peter? Neil?
I voted the table, so.
That's what I was asking, so.
Well, yeah, but now the motion table failed, so how do you want to vote on this? Yes or no?
I'd have to vote negative also.
Okay. And I'll vote positive. So the vote is five to two. Steve, next.
Well, the next thing, since you voted for a positive declaration, the applicant has to decide if they want to go forward with the EIS process, and if they do, we'll start working on a scoping document.
Okay.
So now would be an appropriate time to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Art?
Well, I'm sure Mr. Gaba will advise you, as will Mr. Robbins, that the next step for the board, as it proceeds down this path, would be to schedule a scoping session. And the applicant certainly has the opportunity to submit a proposed scope to the board.
Is that what you want to do?
I have to confer with my client what we're going to do. But should we go that route? That's what we'll do.
Do you want to work to schedule a scoping session for next month, or?
We certainly could, certainly.
Withdraw out of?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you schedule a scoping session for next month? We'll have a draft scope prepared for people to comment on. We'll file it with the.
We need to make a motion to that effect.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Anyone? Motion to schedule scoping session?
Ask a question. Would that be during a regular meeting or would that be an additional meeting?
Well, you can do it either way. It's up to you. It's just like a public hearing, except it's not a public hearing.
Well, I went through one years ago. It's, can get fairly long.
Yeah, it's like one, but it isn't a public hearing.
Yeah. So.
So do we want to do it in a regular meeting or do we want to do it in a special meeting?
Let's set it up for next month's meeting, and if it doesn't work out, we'll can, talk ahead of time, we can reschedule it.
Okay. So I'll make that motion to schedule a scoping session for next month's meeting. That's May 17.
May 17.
May 17.
Can we have discussion about that for a moment?
Sure.
We need a second first.
You already got one.
Oh, David. Okay. Yes, Neil.
So I just wonder, as a way to make this more efficient, having heard the comments of the board related to the property and the application, can someone, maybe Tara, I look at you, or maybe it's Ron or Steve, summarize the comments of the board as a starting place for those things that would be scoped? Because clearly, the comments this board has made would be generally the areas we'd want scoping around.
How quick? Can you get minutes?
How quick? Can you get minutes? Well, I have it too. I mean, I can get them as quick as you want them.
Oh, okay. Then yes, absolutely. I'll have to see the minutes. I didn't really keep that good of notes, to be honest with you. Well, not comprehensive ones, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Well, you'll submit your written comments.
I don't write that fast. I really need something on paper.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second.
David, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And anything else in the interim that we need on this?
No, that's your next step as far as, you're not going anywhere until you, you know, go through the secret process on this. Thanks.
Back to the agenda, item number one. Everybody get set here first? Everybody ready?
Yep.
Return of escrow, Altech Service Center, Robert Miller, 1380 Route 9. Motion on the return of escrow.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The thing is, I'm not sure that all the bills, if you can make it, just make it subjective confirmation. There are no outstanding bills.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion conditional to the bills being checked and making sure there are no outstanding bills, that we return the escrow.
Okay, second.
I'll second the.
Dennis?
Dennis.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. James Copeland, schedule site visit. Do we have anything else with that, Ron? Just to schedule a site visit?
Right. It's been delayed. The board's had weather issues once before, and it's just a matter for you to schedule it so you can actually move this forward.
He needed to show up. Peter and I went and they didn't show up, so we have to reschedule.
Okay.
Oh, put an RE in there? All right. We have a.
The earliest you could do it is the 29th.
Forget me until after May 5th.
So, I mean, you can schedule.
Well, I mean, I can go any.
You want to do it May 6. I didn't think so.
I'll be just recovering.
What? Oh, when you're coming back?
The site, yeah, on the 5th.
Did he, did you get in contact with him, though?
Yeah. He could make it tonight, so he sent someone in his.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Who's here replacing Mr. Copeland? Okay.
Hi.
This is somebody here. So what's the next possible, the following Sunday?
So, well, May 6, which is the day after you get back, otherwise, May 13.
Is that okay with anybody, everybody?
6 is not good for me. 13 is okay.
Okay. May 13? Anybody else have a problem with that?
13 is Mother's Day.
Oh, God.
I'll bring donuts.
My partner says I never bring her anywhere.
I'm happy to do Mother's Day. I don't have a problem.
No, 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 no. I'll get a beating like you won't. What's the next one, 21st? 20th?
I believe the 20th, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be after the 20th.
What's the 20th?
I'm not in town.
But that would be, but that's.
This one, we don't need all of them.
That would be after the next scheduled meeting. Next scheduled meeting is the 17th.
Let's hold it to May, but Peter can't do it either. Right, Peter?
Oh, building. Yeah, I know.
I know the place.
Anyone who can make it drive by Route 9. It's right on the highway.
I do it all the time, yeah.
May 6.
Who can do it, May 6?
I could do May 6.
I could do, I'm sure I could do.
All right, then schedule for May 6. If I can roll that aside.
9:30?
Yeah, 9:30. May 6. Sorry, guys.
Do you have to make a motion on that?
Yes, yes. But May 6 is the date? Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
9:30 on the 6th.
Yes. Now, surprise, item number three. Are we all set on that one? Item number three, Surprise Lake Camp. Ron, you prepared resolutions?
Right. The board has before had a technical memorandum from my office, just summarizing the current status. They've identified previous issues raised, they've now, for the most part, been resolved. They made various referrals to outside agencies, and those agencies have responded as appropriate. And the applicant has responded and made plan corrections as necessary to address concerns for both New York State Parks and the Fire Department. So given that, and at the board's direction, I had prepared draft negative secret declaration and an approval resolution for your consideration tonight.
Neil? Are you moonlighting? Moonlighting?
Yeah, I missed some of that, too. Sorry.
All right. Take a motion to adopt a negative declaration on Surprise Lake Camp. Ron's already drawn it up. Motion to that effect.
Do we, do we, we have anything else to discuss about Surprise Lake?
Not that I'm aware of. Anybody?
I got the police, the fire department.
Ron, you said we had the recommendations from.
We had comments received from outside agencies, being New York State Parks, relative to concerns over some of the environmental protections that were raised. There were comments from the North Highlands Fire Department to suggest improvements to the layout and minimum design requirements. The applicant has responded, the design engineers responded to you and resubmitted plans that address those concerns.
Okay, sorry. It's distraction with the.
Yeah.
The thing.
Yeah, thing. Okay, now, we're looking for a motion to adopt a negative declaration, a resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Peter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we knew, need a motion for the resolution to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Another second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Going to skip one more.
This is Surprise Lake Camp. We just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I was going to move you around. I have a comment from, if you'll hold on for a second, we have an individual going to address us on the comprehensive plan update, just, should take a few moments. Sorry.
He was from Surprise Lake. He's done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was just saying thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he was just saying thank you. You're good. You're good.
Okay.
What did you do to us? On the next, next one up?
Yeah, next one up.
Toman.
Let's go.
Good evening. My name is Lithgow Osborne, and I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee. In our effort to be as, to enjoin as many members of the various boards in Phillips Town, we want to invite you to join us in the conversation as we begin the process of updating the comprehensive plan. We have added, there were ten goals originally. We've added an 11th goal, which concerns health and safety, knowing that, you know, the various, the impact that certain developments or lack of, you know, proper drainage could, you know, et cetera, et cetera, water quality could have on our health. So it's a goal that we're putting in there, and all of the original ten goals are being reviewed and analyzed and, you know, will be looked at and added to and, you know, fine-tuned. And we're hoping that you will join us in that conversation by looking over the comprehensive plan, because I know you have nothing better to do. And any thoughts, any ideas, things that you think might have been missed the last time that you feel should be covered this time? We would be very grateful to hear your ideas. And at some point in the future, not anytime soon, maybe two or three months, we'd love to have you come and anybody who wants to come to one of our meetings and to join the conversation, and we could certainly keep you apprised of what part of the comprehensive plan we would be reviewing at that point. And because there's, there'll be some aspects that won't be of interest so much, but anyway.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this a formal town activity?
Yes, it is. We were just appointed by the town board.
So, Mr. Chair, could we possibly pick someone from this board who would be the representative, if you will, on a formal basis, from the planning board to the conservation?
Volunteers.
We meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month at 6:30 at Town Hall.
I can volunteer for that.
Thank you.
Also, I believe when it first started, don't look at me, that Nat Prentice is on this board?
Yes, Nat Prentice.
Keep talking to me about it when you're just forming.
Right.
And I didn't hear from him again, because maybe he figured we were all too busy. I can't imagine, I got that idea, but.
If you want to volunteer, I'll see.
No, no, you. If you, if you guys are putting information out on a basis, to just keep us informed, as a sort of the info line, get all our emails, our town emails, and just keep us informed, and then we can back and forth two-way conversation without actually attending the meeting other than Kim.
We haven't, we, we, each of the members of the committee have taken a goal and are, you know, reviewing it and rewriting it and sort of revisiting it. And once it's a little bit more formally realized, we can send our notes and the reports that we've each done onto you all. And because we are hoping at some point to have a public meeting to talk, to discuss.
But now you have it in its form as written.
Yes.
Many years ago, so forth.
Yes.
And you're working on what you think is wrong, but we could get that off of the website.
Current, as it is, as it is written now, it's on the town website.
Right. Right, so we could take a look and see if anything...
Exactly. And, you know, because there may be some, I mean, I don't know who all was on the planning board, maybe none of you were, when it was originally written, but the feeling was at the time, one of the members of the planning board was a little put out that we had, that the members of the Comprehensive Planning Committee did not come to them, did not come to the planning board at the beginning of the process, and only enjoin the planning board later. And so, we're trying to, you know, make sure that you're all in the conversation now, so we don't get to that point, because we all work pretty well together, so let's not create any trouble. Oh.
Okay. Thanks, let's go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Okay, you gotta go. Item number 6 on the original agenda, Garrison Property Holdings LLC, 8892 Riverwill Pond Road. Where are you going, Paris?
I'm going to Montauk.
Oh, the end, you're going, he's going to the end.
To the end.
Say hello to the ocean for us.
I will.
Have a good trip. Garrison Property, yes.
Since we're planning to come back in.
Oh, yeah, Alex Campbell, Forecliff Side Court. Okay, we're jumping, sorry. Introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do.
Hey, guys, thank you for taking the time, Mr. Chairman, members of board. I've met a couple of you before, but, my name's Alex Campbell, I'm from Pennsylvania. I work in renewable power in New York City for small-scale hydro groups and geothermal power installs. I came to find out about Garrison through a friend of mine who went to West Point, and, you know, sadly, he passed away in June 2014 in Afghanistan, and my friend invited me up here for a weekend away, and it was at 25 Denning Hill, the cottage owned by Mahmood, and it overlooked West Point, and it became a very spiritual place for me at that time. And so, I spent, that was June 2014, July 2014, so I spent about a year looking around for a property to maybe buy or develop, as a developer. And, in looking at properties to buy, I saw there was a kind of disparity of levels, and it was multimillion-dollar homes or cottages that were, you know, from the 50s or 60s, and were pretty expensive, too. So, I thought, well, look for land. So, I found this piece of land at Forecliff Side Court, which is part of the parcel that I'm applying for, and I saw the previous owner's plan, and it had a, you know, a huge access road to develop a water well. And I saw that and quickly realized, well, I would never do that to begin with, but it just looks really bad and would cost a lot of money. So, I was able to acquire the property south of mine to put the water well on. And I worked with Mr. Watson and his team to come up with a plan, which I have here, and I'm sorry I didn't submit it, but I only got free from them, and I'll show it to you, I have a couple others. And so, we had a pre-application meeting in November 2016, and, you know, we talked through potentially acquiring the property in 26 Upland Drive, which has been under foreclosure since January 2010. I've spent, since then, I spent about another year trying to find that owner and work out a short sale with the lender. Even my neighbors on Cliffside Court and Upland helped me to try and find her, and it's a delicate situation, as you can imagine, anytime with a foreclosure, and I just, I can't find her. So, you know, in lieu of the, in lieu of finding her, I went through the town goals, and I'd like to highlight goals, four particular goals for my property, because I think I have a solution that I think everybody will like. I did read Ron's email, sorry that I didn't have the, my updated email, but I did read through this, and regardless, I'll do these requests that you guys have, the SEQR and the referrals. But let me just read the goals and give some color. So, goal number 2, maintain and enhance the socioeconomic diversity of Phillips Town's population by increasing the availability of moderate-priced rental and ownership housing. That would fully lie square in me, because this would be a moderately priced home that is new and encourages socioeconomic diversity. Number 5, control real estate property by ensuring they are reasonable and equitable by maximizing tax revenues while minimizing costs of providing municipal services.
If I could just, I don't need to interrupt your presentation, but just so we could orient the board and focus on the issue at hand, as I understand it, what you need is approval of an open development area road in order for you to get a building permit for your property? So, in order to get an open development area road, what you need to do is convince this board that there's safe and suitable access over the private right-of-way, which leads to the property. Yep. And are we gonna get to that issue, or?
Yeah, we'll get there.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. So, yeah, so maximize tax revenues while minimizing costs to municipal services. Obviously maximize tax revenue, because if I had a home, my taxes would go up, but I have private, and my private sewer and water, minimize municipal services, and protect Phillips Town's natural resources through protecting water quality, wetlands, and then revat, goal 10, revise land use regulations to rewrite, by rewriting zoning code and land development regulations as they apply to Manitow, Lake Valhalla, and Continental Village. So, my, my proposal is, I'll give you, I'll grant the town of Phillips Town an acre of my land that touches the wetlands to promote all of these things as a pathway to get approval of access. The suitable and safe ingress and egress, which you noted, Mr. Gabba, I think is an objective question, and I think Ron's request to have referrals from Continental Village Fire Department is 100% fair. I know Lou Meddy personally, he lives at the end of Cliffside Court. I have him in my phone number, in my phone book. He's a supporter of me, he's a good guy, and he wants people like me in the community who are younger, you know, that can help out with plowing the roads, because he doesn't want to do it anymore. I've also spoken to the fire chief of Continental Village, and I submitted the letter that they responded to in my request to ask if Upland Drive is in fact suitable and safe for ingress and egress. I've also reached out to all of my neighbors and asked if over the last 20, 30 years that they've lived there, if there have been any accidents. And I haven't received any documents or documentation of any accidents. So, that's to your point, but my offer is really to give you the acre that touches the wetlands that the Phillips Town itself has outlined and owns all of the wetlands south of my property as well. That's at PhillipsTown.com/wetlandsmap.pdf. So, you can easily see that the acre that I'd gift back to the town would be an enhancement for the task.
Well, being honest with you, Mr. Campbell, like Mr. Gabba said, we're dealing with access, and I don't know, the town might want to, might not want to take the land.
Okay.
So, I think we should try and stick to what's germane. Ron, you wanna try and tell him what he needs?
Right. So, the application is before you for access approval, as Mr. Gabba explains. To date, you've just received a letter from the applicant and the application form itself. There's a need to file appropriate fees, which I think will work out to confirm what the amounts should be. There's also a need to provide an EAF and a physical plan of what his improvements would be, so you can discern exactly where his proposal and need for access would be, and then I'm suggesting in my technical memorandum that you schedule a site walk so that you can evaluate for yourself exactly what condition the existing private road is in. And related to that, I'm also suggesting that this board write, as you've done in the past, to the local fire chief and get their opinion, as you've done with other projects. And I'm fairly certain they would respond, and you'll then have a basis to understand if there's a need for any improvements at all.
Okay.
It starts with a need for the applicant to file a plan, which I think he's doing tonight. And you also have to file at least a short-form EAF, which you can obtain from the building department. I'm not sure if they're online, are they online? You can get that from the town website as well, but they should come in immediately.
Yep, okay. As far as the plan goes, one thing I thought of, the guidelines right now are very onerous to, for that road, for Upland. And, you know, Mr. Watson, he's not here, but Badien Watson said on record that you guys have that it is, the only way it's able to be done is unless you're willing to tunnel or go into a cavern like on, like the old rock cut in Peak Skill, and you won't go in for 150 feet. So, when you think it's presenting an alternative, it's not, it's feasible. So, what I was thinking about doing is just talking to the neighbors and asking what the touch points are for them, because it's really hard for me to approach the idea of upgrading a road without something that's feasible, which apparently 14 degrees and 20 feet wide is not feasible, according to Badien Watson. But also, I understand that, you know, you guys, you guys don't want me to ruin or decrease the traction on the road that is already, according to a lot of the people in the town, a difficult road. So, for me, I was thinking maybe it would be helpful to approach it in a way that kind of helped everybody, by going to the neighbors and saying, hey, guys, you know, what are the touch points of this road? Knowing full well that this is something that I have to bear the full cost of, and I get no help from anybody. So, I don't want to just go into it with a black box, and next thing you know, it's a $200,000, you know, upgrade.
The way the process will work, and as you describe it, the town land development regulations have specific criteria for construction standards on a private road.
Right.
The reason you're before this board is because the access, the private roads to your lot
Right.
don't comply with that standard. The point of the planning board to accomplish a site visit is to determine what relief may be appropriate from those standards to lessen the requirements.
Okay, got it. So, that would...
But they still, they still may identify improvements that are appropriate to make for safe access. And as part of that, they also rely heavily on any comments the emergency responders would provide, and that's the point of the referral to the local fire.
Continental Village, got it, okay, great.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
From the town engineer, you have, where do you have to go next? Okay?
I think you should be turning in plans. You're handing in plans?
Sure.
I need two.
Needs an EAF, too.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Will he even organize schedule a site visit before he's done this? Got his fees in and everything? No?
No.
Oh, we won't, we're not gonna schedule a site visit yet. Okay? Okay, no, he has to prepare an EAF, and what else does he have to get to us?
Provide a plan, which is just turned in tonight.
Yeah.
So, I think one thing we can do is, if you wish, if you think it's appropriate, you can at least start a referral to the Fire Department, because that may take a little bit of time.
Okay.
For them to respond.
Got that? Okay?
Okay.
Do you make a motion that we refer this to the Continental Village Fire Department?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So, to be clear, I won't be reaching out to Continental Fire Department, you guys will?
We will.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. This is the last item on the agenda, okay. Garrison Property Holdings, Glenn?
Okay, you have an application for approval to remove from this property, which is the former Baltimore, it used to be Freeman, before that it was Balter, before that it was Mrs. Webb, I think. This is property that's at the end of Whipperwill. Whipperwill, forget the rest of the name. Private road. Huh? Whipperwill Farm?
Whipperwill Pond Road.
Pond Road, yeah. Whipperwill Pond is over here, property comes in on a private road to a compound where there were two main houses, pool house and the main house. It has a cottage, it has a garage, and I think a barn, in a barn. They want to take down the cottage, the barn and the garage and in this area, and they want to replace it with a larger residential structure and a garage, and another garage. Want to put in a new septic system. We have more than one principal dwelling on a site, so we need your approval for that. We're adding bedrooms, there are gonna be a net increase in bedrooms of two, which requires this new septic system. And I just got Ron's review memo. He raises an issue with regard to these sections of steep slopes. We don't think they actually qualify, because, you know, you have to fit those rectangles around the steep slopes, and if the steep slope doesn't fit inside the rectangle, it's not a, it doesn't count, it goes with the adjacent slope. So, we think we're okay with that, and we don't, we don't have to worry about that. And I understand, and I wasn't handling this in the office, but I understand from one of the engineers that septic permit has actually been issued on this. And, so we need your site plan approval. They're gonna build a larger driveway, which will accommodate a fire truck turnaround in here. Basically, we're putting driveway back in the same place, except bigger. Get rid of the cottage where the barn was, we'll put the new house.
So, that road isn't new, is that road new to the house?
This road is, I gotta remember. No, this road is not new, it's been around for a while.
They're both existing.
Yeah, they're both existing today. One of them is newer than another, and I can't remember which one was there first, although I'm old enough to remember when there was only one.
Are there any conservation easements on this property?
Oh, yeah, this is a really big piece of property. You're just dealing with a little part up here at the very north end, this wide part here. And this property goes all the way down to the county line, and most of it is under conservation easement.
And are there restrictions for, does the land trust hold the easement?
I don't believe the land trust holds this easement unless it was transferred, because it was quite a while ago. There certainly are restrictions on there, but I'd have to check. The, I don't believe that the entire property is under conservation easement, as is generally the case today. I believe only a portion of the property is under conservation easement.
Okay, because there, just in case there are any restrictions over, you know...
We can, I'll make sure that gets checked.
Thank you.
That's a whole story.
Should we set up site visit, public?
Site visit to start, right. The considerations for tonight's meeting is one to classify the project. As the applicant indicates, he does require site plan approval from the board. Glenn's discussion on whether steep slopes are being disturbed relates to whether a special permit is required pursuant to your terrain original and protection regs, and Glenn and I will get into that. So, we'll establish whether that's necessary or not. We certainly need site plan approval.
Can you explain that steep slopes in a rectangle that he mentioned?
I don't have your specific reg in front of you, in front of me, but the qualifies as a steep slope, there's a certain minimum dimension that's required within that steep slope.
Because otherwise it's a non or something?
Otherwise, it falls to the next lower slope designation. So, he may be correct, we just have to analyze. They do indicate steep slopes, they just may not qualify.
Let's say you have a prairie, right, no steep slopes. And then say, right in the middle of it, you have a step. And then say, right in the middle of it, you have a step that's very steep.
Mm-hmm.
Until that steps get, that step gets big enough to be very steep, 25 feet wide, this doesn't count. It has a steep slope, so a very quick step is not, doesn't constitute a, a steep slope. And there's a measurement, it depends on the grade of the slope, it's any, it's a, the smallest it is, is a 25-foot square, then it goes to a 25-foot by 50-foot, and then 25-foot by 75-foot, depending on the slope. And so you discount that and just, just say, okay, that's too small to get the overall sense of the property. When it get, as it gets bigger, as, as that steep slope gets bigger, then, then it qualifies. So it's, it's a way to sort of average things out. Some towns do circles that you have to fit in, there's all kinds of rigmarole you gotta go through to, to kind of eliminate, you know.
Right, certainly, certainly the issue is, if it's a steep slope, it's a steep slope. The question is, is it regulated by ordinance?
Right.
And that's what's being referred to.
So it could be.
So it may not be under regulation, and I will verify.
So it could be like 24 feet high, but a foot wide, and it wouldn't count?
No, no, this, this, this measurement's horizontal. I'm sorry, the measurement, the 25-foot rec, is, is on the map, flat. So it could be, yeah, it could be, it could be, you could have, you could have something jump up 10 feet in, in, in one foot and still not qualify, because, because it doesn't have enough breadth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need to classify, this is a major project.
Yeah, it represents a major project, that should be classified tonight.
Move to that extent, to that effect?
I'll move to classify as a major project.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Need to declare lead agency.
Well, let's see, there's other, other involved agencies. Glenn is indicating that Putnam County Health has already signed off.
Putnam County Health?
Yeah, we put a new septic system in.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, there's a referral, referral required to Putnam County Planning, because the property actually has frontage on Route 9, and it, and it touches the county line.
Okay.
And then, depending on whether these slopes are classified or regulated as steep slopes, there may be a referral to the conservation board.
But we're not sure.
Right, and we'll verify that within the next day or so.
Not all of those are interested agencies, they're not involved.
Right, that's correct. Well, Putnam County Health is involved. Putnam County Health is an involved agency, they're granting a permit.
They grant. Although they're a permitting agency, it's really not a discretionary approval, besides, I think they've signed off already, right?
They've signed off already, yeah.
So I think you just declare lead agency, I don't think you need to mail out the notice.
Okay. Move to declare planning board lead agency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next thing is site visit.
Site visit, right.
Ah, boy. Do we only have one on May 6th?
You only have one on May 6th?
Yeah, and that's Copeland, that shouldn't take you very long.
Yeah, that's quickie.
If we show up.
What's the date?
May 6th.
May 6th.
10, you want to do it after Copeland?
Yeah, after, definitely after Copeland. Motion to that effect?
We should say 10:15, because it's, like, it'll take us.
All right.
How long will it take us to drive down there, Neil?
By the time you get done looking at Copeland and then the drive.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can't get, theoretically, you don't, the meeting down there won't start before they designated time, so it could always be later. So, if you want to put 10:30. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
That we have our site visit at 10:30 on May 6th.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
Finally, you can make a motion to make the referral to Putnam County Planning.
Okay. Motion to refer to Putnam County Planning?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Dave, Peter, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll defer to the CB anyway, if it turns out it's not necessary, so be it.
Okay.
I mean, in that way, it's not, you know.
Okay, one more motion to that effect.
See, once the basis for referring to the CB?
Steep slopes.
In case there are significant slopes.
Okay, motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Who else?
May I get one moment?
Yes.
I understand that OPRHP, Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Places, has opined and written back to the town with regard to the Buck Patterson project, site plan. So I respectfully ask that you place that on next month's agenda and ask Mr., and ask Mr. Gaynor to prepare a resolution to, to resolve that and hopefully approve it.
As the board will recall, that was the last open issue. You've previously had and closed a public hearing, and then the issue came up.
On Buck.
Right, this is all on Buck.
Yeah.
So it's, you're now prepared with the ship off sign-off to consider approving the project.
Okay, so we'll put that on next month's meeting.
So I'll make the motion to prepare the resolution, for Ron to prepare resolution.
Seeker.
Seeker, neg, dec, and second?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We need one more, right?
Oh, you want approved?
Yeah.
And the approval, okay. Motion to the effective, direct Ron to prepare an approval.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
We've got a busy week coming up, Ron.
I'll make sure I sign your vouchers.
Move to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.